Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting of April 13th to order. If I can just remind all board members to turn their microphones on and to leave them on for the duration of the meeting. First up, we have our approval of our agenda. Motion?
I'll move out.
Motion by Mark?
Support.
Support from Andrew. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
First up is our board recognition after Vanda Jett.
Yeah, we'd like to recognize some of our robotics students here tonight. And I have Mr. Pete Beeman out there. Pete's gonna introduce, say a few words, show up to the board. There's a little bit of the slideshow on your left on the TV behind you. And then we'd like to recognize some students. So turn over Pete.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. I have several students before you that have been working on their robots for more than thirty weeks. So they start in September, and just like every little league team, the better you perform, the longer the season grows. So they've been at this for thirty weeks. They continue to redesign and improve. They've been working really hard. These teams have competed in numerous tournaments, over a hundred matches. Team eighty-three-one R won their division and were the finalists at the state tournament. And then Team eighty-three-one B won the Judges Create Award at that same state tournament. Now, both these teams are headed to Vex World Tournament in Dallas. They will be competing against, among eight hundred high school teams, age students, from forty different countries. So there's even a little bit of a language barrier, a culture barrier, that they have to overcome when they're collaborating with these teams. One other thing I also want to mention is that eighty-three-one R has been using robotics as their independent study class. So they're actually using this as a class during the daytime, and they're coordinating with Kelly Tenbrock, who's their advisor. The game this year is called Spin-Up. It's very similar to frisbee golf. So these teams have to launch these frisbees into a game. It's much like change. You can see the chains on the side. So it's very much like frisbee golf. The chains are about twenty-five inches off the ground. The robots can only be eighteen inches tall. So there's a little height problem there. They can't reach up and put discs in the basket. They either have to find a way to launch them or use something like a flywheel to punch them into the goals. The other interesting thing is the little area underneath those goals is your opponent's scoring zone. So every time they miss, the disc drops down and gives their opponent a point. So you have to be accurate, and you have to be fast. And again, these teams have done really well. On the next slide, we have the fifth and sixth grade, which is our Vex IQ program. Very similar. They're using much smaller discs. But they have to design these robots to empty those contraptions. So they have to get the discs to dump out of the contraptions, pick them up, and then they fire them under that bar to score, kind of like a slapshot game. So these are fifth and sixth graders that have accomplished this. Now, I'll tell you a little bit about our program on the next slide. We have seventy students competing at various levels and grades between fifth and twelfth grade, with twenty mentors or team coordinators volunteering to help the students stay focused. This is a student-centered program. And what I mean by that is that the students determine their strategy, the robot design, programming, and then they document everything and put it into an engineering notebook. They compete, collaborate with other teams, present to judges, and even handle disagreements with referees. A shy student may need to raise her voice if they disagree with an official. An arrogant student might be humbled, okay? It's very interesting to watch these students learn sportsmanship, generosity, discipline, and patience. And just to share a little bit of a story, during that IQ turn, the little shot I showed you was before, we had a sixth grader place his robot on the field, got ready to start competing. The timer started, the buzzer goes off, and this robot doesn't move. Well, he looks down, and he realizes he hadn't turned it on. And if you watch, the level of frustration, his hands started clenching up, his face started wincing, and he was so upset with himself because the timer's ticking, and there's pressure, and his world is just collapsing in on him. And I happened to be at the field, and I tapped him on the shoulder. I'm like, "Turn it on." And so he hopped up, turned it back on, and he was able to complete the match and participate in the event. And what was interesting is afterwards, I just kind of tapped him on the shoulder. I'm like, "Hey, way to do, you know, nice job. Way to handle that." I said, "Next time, it'll be so much easier for you to deal with that challenge." And throughout all these tournaments, we see frustration. We see these kids enter these very difficult situations, but they have to overcome it, and they find it within themselves to persevere. And it's really neat to see how their behavior changed and how they mature in this program, and they continue on. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I talked about our mentors and our team coordinators. But I didn't say the word "coach." We don't have coaches. I don't have anybody calling in plays or telling you how to build your robot and telling you how to design things. The students handle everything. We really don't want adult interference because we want them to have the creativity and that positive experience to develop something on their own and to be successful with it. Now, while we don't want adults interfering, we do have our loopholes. So we try to take every advantage to make our team successful. And the one option we have is students can ask us questions. So once they are dealing with a problem that they can't quite figure out and they have a challenge, it's up to them to make the determination that says, "I got a problem. I need to figure this out." And if they can't, they come to us and ask us questions. Now, we can provide all sorts of answers, but we're usually not that specific. So we allow them to kind of bounce ideas off of us, and it's amazing. They soundboard us, and they end up coming up with the solutions on their own. And I do also want to share one other point, is that a lot of times, I don't have the answer, and I can't help them, you know, deal with a certain calculation or a certain problem. These teams have gone out and sought out their educators here at the school. They've talked to the physics instructors. They've talked to the mathematics. They've asked for help with presentations, trigonometry, physics, and calculus. And I can proudly say, we finally put the age-old question to bed. When am I gonna ever use this? This is what we're starting right now, actually just a few days ago, is our spring training program. This is where adults can educate the students. We can help them understand the fundamentals of robot building. And we have been working with community education to establish a number of two-day camps that get these students involved. Our Intro to Robotics camp, which is up there on the screen, we give students the opportunity to try competitive robots. It's just a little two-evening event, to see if they like it before committing to a whole twelve-week competition season. The first day, they build simple little robots with instructions provided, and then they play a game so they get to learn how the competition works. Let's go to the next slide. Day two, we teach some entry-level programming. And so I had a lesson plan all laid out. I had a whole design that they were going to make these robots navigate the maze. And these are fourth graders. I spent fifteen minutes teaching them, and they said, "Nope, we got it." They spent an hour programming these robots and figuring out the right code to get these robots to navigate. These are fourth graders, and they're doing amazing things on the field. So, yeah, it's neat to watch. So, in closing, I just wanted to share how proud I am of these teams and recognize how hard they worked to make it to the world tournament. As a program, our goal is to continue to make this available to more students. We want to find a way to encourage more girls to get involved if they're interested. And we also want to look for opportunities to involve the HPS staff to get them more a part of the success of these kids. So this program is absolutely fascinating. Thank you for allowing me to share some of our intricate student development levels. And I hope you notice that they go way beyond the robotics technology itself.
So can we recognize the gentlemen that are here tonight? We have a certificate. We'd like to come down and congratulate them. Maybe, once we get down there, you can call them up one at a time to the middle of us down there.
Okay. Alright. Let's start with Joshua DeMore. Oh, he's not here today. And then Brennan Wheeler. Jacob Van Dyke. And Mason Timmer.
Sit in our discussion. If you can wait for two seconds, actually. We do have a student council report, and then you can squeak out. And I do want to recognize the fact that I know that some of you won't be here in a couple of years, but we're looking forward to the old office area, which is being transitioned to an entire robotics suite, which will be nice, not only for the program, but for all students, middle school through high school, using this the opportunity for multiple rooms, storage. They've been moving around this district, finding any place possible to conduct their work. And they've done amazing work not having a facility all the time. And we're looking forward to, in about a year and a half to two years, having your own place. And I know you might not be here unless we keep you that long. I know you want to stay for multiple years, but looking forward to that. So, once again, nice job, gentlemen.
Great job, guys.
Next up, we have our student council report.
Hello. My name is Breila Beamer, and I'm here to report on behalf of student council. And while you're still here, I'd also like to extend my congratulations. I don't have a lot to share today, but the biggest thing is that currently, we are running a blood drive promotion. And so if we get six more donors, we will be bumped up to the company's next level, which means that student council will get an additional $750 to spend on the school. And if you would like to, you can sign up through Versity. And if you write Eagles in the note section, it will count towards us. Also, we just opened our student council applications. So if you know any high schoolers, you can encourage them, maybe. Senior bricks. So we're doing this thing where each senior can paint a brick on the wall, just kind to leave their mark on the school. And, yeah, it'll be really fun. Thank you. Are there any questions for me?
How many, where are these bricks? The other painting?
Um, it's like...
The brand new ones.
Is it all the way right up here? No.
I'm very bad with directions. I'm trying to think.
That's okay.
Yeah, there are, yeah, by the old locker rooms. Yeah. There are already some painted, so come up for examples.
Quickly, are there any questions for Breila?
Prom is coming up.
Prom is coming up, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll have nice weather for prom.
Hopefully, yeah. But luckily, it's inside, so not like homecoming two years ago.
Alright, nice job, Breila.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys.
Next up, we have recognition of visitors and hearing that people present. I would like to thank our representative just a second to the event. Sarah Tate.
Hello. My name is Sarah Tate, and I am a resident of Hudsonville and actually a former employee of this district. I was a special ed paraprof at Baldwin for two years. I moved to Hudsonville from Genesee about seven years ago because of the opportunities to build in Hudsonville that are just not available in Genesee. Over these past seven years, I've been really impressed with the school system here. I have many friends who work here, and I always vote to support the millages, like the one next month, because I know that good public schools benefit our community. I'm here today, though, because although I live in Hudsonville, my two kids attend El Puente, which is the Spanish immersion school in Genesee. My husband and I put our name in that lottery for Spanish immersion because of the unique opportunities it would provide our kids, opportunities that are not available in other districts. We were fortunate enough to get into El Puente, and then we're incredibly grateful that we were able to get busing because we live so close to the border between the districts. I recently found out that the board has decided to no longer allow Genesee buses into the district, and I'm here to let you know that this will impact not only my family, but many families in my neighborhood. Although I do understand the basic reasoning behind the decision, this abrupt change will put a strain on my family and I'm sure many others. There are currently seven families that are a little bus stop on Camrose Drive, families with working parents, busy schedules, and kids firmly entrenched in the school that they attend. We feel a little blindsided by this decision and are hoping the board will reassess how this decision is being rolled out. Perhaps it could be more of a gradual process, maybe work with Genesee to only bus students who are already established, or maybe there's a way to kind of pull the line back in a more gradual manner over the course of a year or so. Or perhaps something else. I know the transportation departments in both of our districts have navigated a lot in the past few years and may have ideas of how to approach this. In closing, I just want to acknowledge the interconnectedness of Hudsonville and Genesee and how welcome we have felt in both communities over the past few years. I know that you all have a lot on your collective plates right now, but I would appreciate you taking the time to further discuss this decision and potential possibilities for flexibility and how it is implemented. I and many other working parent families would be very grateful. Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Lindsay Remley. I have been to a lot of Genesee board meetings because I'm a Genesee high school teacher, and this is my first time at a Hudsonville board meeting. Lovely, thank you. My speech is almost identical to Sarah's, but I'll try to put a different spin on it. So I teach in Genesee, and my kids also go to El Puente for Spanish immersion. And we chose our home in a rush because that's how the market was. And it's just over the border of, it's in Hudsonville even though it's close to Genesee. The neighborhood is called High Point Acres, near Sarah, Thirty-Sixth and Baldwin, is that type of area. And we chose our home, knowing it was in Hudsonville, even though we knew our kids were definitely going to go to Genesee because I worked there in the Spanish immersion, because of proximity to El Puente. We live pretty close, that's the closest elementary to us. It's a Genesee elementary, but we're in Hudsonville. And also because Genesee Transportation Office assured me that there would be a bus stop really close to my home. They said, "No worries, we have a bus stop right by that spot." And I thought, "Oh, thank goodness, we can make this work." My kids are really small. They're five and eight, so they can't have a bus stop, you know, a mile away. They're too little. And my husband works downtown, and I'm a high school teacher, so the days start so early that we really need transportation, and we thought we were assured of that. And so when I found out about the decision, I started talking to some administrators in Genesee and asking, like, what was the purpose of this, this change? It's so abrupt, you know? We're shocked by this. And of course, I didn't get any, like, for sure answers because we don't know. I can only make assumptions. I'm guessing that it's probably financial, you know, per pupil funding. You know, our kids who live in Hudsonville going to Genesee probably don't want that. Don't want to make it too easy for out-of-district people, maybe, you know, get your own transportation. If you live in Hudsonville, your kids should go to Hudsonville. I get, like, I get that side of it. But for people in my neighborhood and Lowing Woods and all these other border neighborhoods where Genesee buses currently serve, we built whole homes under the idea that we would have busing to Genesee, even though we're in Hudsonville. You know, I bought a whole home thinking I would have busing available for my kids while they're still little, and it feels like it's getting yanked, like, right out from under us. And we're like, "Oh, no." And so all these families I've been talking to, you know, it's not that many, it's pockets around the border, are all like, "What are we gonna do with our little ones who, we can't just uproot them and quick send them to a Hudsonville school. They are very, you know, comfortable at their school, and we go to Genesee for certain reasons. For me, it's I work there, some people at Spanish immersion, you know? We're not just gonna uproot them and quick send them to a Hudsonville school, but we are really in a pinch, and we are scrambling." And so the decision just feels like abrupt and cold and not neighborly. And I think about how Genesee and Hudsonville are so interwoven, like, El Puente has an Hudsonville address, and my time is up. Please reconsider. Thank you so much.
Gwen Snowy.
Contrary to what some may think, I support every parent's right to raise their children according to their beliefs. That's what America's all about. The fact is that we have three thousand four hundred sixty-three families in this district, and we have thousands more in this community that support this school. How can we honor the beliefs of every family? It's not by survey results of a small percentage. It's not by allowing each teacher to promote their own values or declaring our current staff to be experts because they'll come and go, just like everybody has before them. It's not about choosing an SEL curriculum that prescribes the author's worldview. It's not about deciding that children must be freed from their parents' values, or that heterosexuality or Caucasians or capitalists have had their turn, and now it all must be flipped. It's about installing policy that requires professionalism, impartiality, and respect for the parents and the community. When a child comes to school as a vegetarian, that conviction has been set in their home. It has little effect on the school day. We don't expect a teacher to take the position pro or con. We don't allow anyone to mock the vegetarians for their choices, but we don't try to convince everyone else that they must support vegetarianism. We make sure we have honest labels on our cafeteria food, and everyone simply goes about their day. This is the kind of respect that we need for the personal beliefs of every child. Christians raise our children to honor God, our Creator. We follow the Bible. We teach our kids that Jesus shows us the way to a full life. We believe sexual promiscuity and pornography are destructive to our children. We don't want these things slipped into our kids' books or lessons. They need to be clearly labeled so that we can avoid them. Just like you're careful not to promote Jesus or Christianity, you need to be careful not to promote LGBT theories, racial theories, communist theories, like the demand for equal outcomes. When someone says they are Christian, or Jewish, or LGBT, or Wiccan, whether they're hunters, or whether they hate guns, the polite response from a teacher or another student should be, "Oh." With nearly four thousand families, differences are inevitable. Our school's calling is not to make sure that everyone's religious and social values are the same. Your high calling as a board is to make sure that we focus on academics and civility, and that you root out any indoctrination that would undermine the deeply held beliefs of any of our families. Thank you.
Jamie Fleming.
Sorry, I'm down here. Good evening. This week, I spent a good amount of time reviewing job applications, in fact, over a hundred of them. On paper, the applicants looked very similar in areas like math, science, writing, and familiarity with technology. There were some people that had cover letters, resume summary statements, special projects, or volunteer work that reflected personal values and qualities that align with our organizational ones, and most people got to the top of the list. Now, during interviews, we'll probably ask a couple of technical questions to confirm their level of knowledge, maybe give a quick math exercise or a writing exercise. But most of the interview will focus on understanding the candidate's communication style, how they navigate conflict, their level of self-awareness, teamwork style, and whether they respect and appreciate all people. Do they know how to recognize and understand emotions in others, and label, express, and regulate emotions in themselves? Let me say those again. Recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate. See, there's this misconception that topics like math, science, and writing are the most important things for those entering the workforce. But those are just the basic requirements to getting the door. They're not the things that set one candidate apart from any other. In fact, we will not hesitate to choose someone who has high emotional intelligence but lesser technical skill or experience. Those who have social-emotional learning integrated into their education and the opportunity to practice those skills in a group or team setting like a classroom have a giant lead over those who don't. It's a false dichotomy to say that the only options are core subjects or SEL. It is entirely possible to achieve the same level of math, science, and language skills and also do SEL. We know this because more and more schools are offering social-emotional learning across all grade levels, and it shows, and it matters at the interview table. So my request tonight is that you do not discontinue Ruler as Hudsonville's social-emotional curriculum. I took an afternoon, and I looked through all of the K-5 materials, and they're fantastic. They're objective, they're age-appropriate, and they're certainly relevant. And I got a lot of great books to buy for my personal library. But opinion isn't what matters, though, when making decisions that should be data-driven. And I know that you all know that the data support's keeping Ruler in place. Thank you.
Jenna Brahm.
Hi, board. At the last work session, I spoke with you about the Open Meetings Act violation that occurred before the January nineteenth meeting. And what a lot of people didn't realize that while we witnessed the Oath of Office being taken place on the January nineteenth meeting, the three newly-elected board members, Greg, Chansky, Nick Bolheiss, and Barb Hooper, had actually taken the Oath of Office on November twenty-eighth. November twenty-eighth was seven weeks before we were witnessing the ceremonial swearing. During those seven weeks prior to that meeting, there were eight incidences where texts and emails involving voting happened between these board members. December twelfth, Nick Bolheiss texts Barb Hooper, "Are you ready to be president?" Barb responds, "I don't know, I'm a bit nervous. I also think you would make a great president." Nick replies, "Greg, Andrew, and I shouldn't be yet, we're too fresh. Depending on the extra workload, I'd be willing to consider VP if you were president." Barb continues, "You would be very good, I just need the support of the board." Nick states, "It will be different come January." Barb agrees, "Yes." January seventh, Greg Chansky texts Nick Bolheiss, "Your laptop is ready, Nick. Just give the office a call, and they will let you know what to do. Spoke with Barb, and she's excited that you are up for VP. Mark will nominate Barb for president, and then someone will nominate you. Four votes are required, and the votes are with us." January sixteenth, Mark Davis emails Barb Hooper, "I'm prepared to nominate you for president. I trust you'll accept. We need a change." Barb replies, "You're going to need to be quick nominating me on Thursday. Nick thinks Don will be nominating Ken right away." January seventeenth, Greg Chansky texts both Nick Bolheiss and Barb Hooper, "Mark will be nominating Barb for president. I will be nominating Nick for VP. Mark will nominate Greg for finance. Remember to vote for yourself." End of story. In those seven weeks, the four of you talked in secret about changes that you wanted to accomplish once you took office. It has been proven that this violates the Open Meeting Act by conspiring and circumventing the public body in voting decisions. Oaths of Office and FOIA results are available by the Holland Sentinel, by the way, if you want to read a great article. It's now time for you to stop talking behind closed doors and to start listening. It's time to listen to the teachers about what changes and what lack of changes they want. It's time for you to start listening to all... In those seven weeks, the four of you talked in secret about changes that you wanted to accomplish once you took office. It has been proven that this violates the Open Meeting Act by conspiring and circumventing the public body in voting decisions. Oaths of office and FOIA results are available by the Holland Sentinel, by the way, if you want to read a great article. It's now time for you to stop talking behind closed doors and to start listening. It's time to listen to the teachers about what changes and what lack of changes they want. It's time for you to start listening to all parents, not just the ones that voted for you. Greg and Mark, I have emailed you both three times and have yet to receive a response since you've taken office. It is time for you to stop talking about a curriculum you have no experience with and listen to the 93% of teachers that have been using curriculum and want to keep Ruler curriculum. Teachers that spent summer months coordinating and making Ruler fit our district because there is nothing cookie cutter about education. One size will never fit all students and will never fit for teaching. If you had any experience in this field, you would know that. It is time to listen to our teachers.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak to you again in support of the teachers and curriculum specialists in our district. As Jenna just mentioned, teachers overwhelmingly support the Ruler curriculum, 93% of them in fact. Parents also strongly support the Ruler curriculum, with 72%. Hey, thanks, Nick, for that number from last work session. At that work session, I watched as Barb tried to imply that the overwhelming 93% was not accurate, as one school that she has visited said some of the teachers liked using SOAR acronym better. And as wonderful as the SOAR acronym is, it's not a curriculum. Teachers need an actual curriculum to base their instruction from. This is why I implore you not to reject Ruler at the next board meeting. Hudsonville does not currently have a replacement curriculum for next school year. That means that teachers have no resources to teach the SEL content that the state requires if you take that away from them. It would undermine and undercut them. It would require hours and hours of more prep on their part. It would be unfair and unjust to do this to the wonderful teachers in our district. In that same work session, we saw Nick try to downplay overwhelming support for Ruler among parents, indicating that it wasn't enough that 72% of parents supported it because only 16% left Ruler-specific comments. I think that leaves out a couple of obvious things. One, most people don't want to leave comments unless they have something to complain about. Um, and in addition, research shows that the more you ask a respondent, the less likely they are to respond. 22% of parents who don't like Ruler should not be able to change an entire curriculum just because they're louder. Greg, I hear you say all the time that all you hear are negative things about Ruler. Well, Greg, that's because you are not serving your entire community. You are living in an echo chamber of your own making. It's apparent from watching these board meetings that some adults in our district need the SEL content talk to them. We saw this last board meeting when Nick and Mark didn't like the fact that all was capitalized in the SOAR survey for a question asking if all students feel welcome and supported. An emphasis was needed because in our district, we hear adults comparing gender non-conforming individuals as flat-earthers. We need all underlined because we hear them suggest that guns should be carried in school. We hear them, uh, we know that all needs to be capitalized because we have people following marginalized and historically excluded community members to their cars and threatening them online. A little compassion, understanding, and love for all humans would be nice to see, especially from our board members.
Okay, good evening. I was recently looking at the board's, um, bios and this is what I saw. Every one of the bios states in some form that they want to provide the best possible education for our children. Two or three state they want the district to prepare the students to be productive citizens. One even mentions learning from a worldview. These are great goals and wonderful words. Unfortunately, I don't see these values being followed up. In order to give the best worldview education, we have to trust the teachers, the professionals that were, that were educated, educated to give the children, all children, all in total caps, um, an education that gives them the tools to go out into the world beyond Hudsonville and Ottawa County. We have to listen to the majority of teachers that say Ruler curriculum is working. Um, I assume not one of you would appreciate or feel respected by a bunch of people coming in, um, and making assumptions about your chosen profession, stepping in and making decisions based on literally no collective reasoning. 93% of our teachers who are actively utilizing this tool do not want to remove Ruler curriculum. You know all the other stats which are in favor of keeping the Ruler intact. In fact, not one of you pulled out numbers as high as the Ruler curriculum during your transparent run for the board. Even, remember, even the parents are in favor of it by approximately 72%. So in order for you to actually follow up with what the majority of the parents and staff want, you will need to leave Ruler curriculum alone, full stop. It's math. Also, how is that full transparency thing going? Three of you really need to rethink what it means and how it looks respectfully. I am so disappointed. I didn't have to agree with everything you, you think or do to think that you would do the right thing. I was hopeful you were going to be more than what you proved to be by your behaviors. Lastly, Winston Churchill once said, "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak. Courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen." It's time for you to listen. I hope, I, I was really hoping, since I have a few more minutes, that some of you that have been caught doing inappropriate interactions would at least address it appropriately, own it. It makes me nervous that people who can't even own mistakes are running this. It kind of becomes less. It's not, it's, it's less than what it could be. That's unfortunate, isn't it? Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our consent agenda. I actually have a motion for the consent agenda. Support from Dawn and support from?
A second.
Nick. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, Barb. I did sign up to speak. Was I not on the list?
Can you say your name again?
Jessica. I signed up a couple of three hours ago, four hours. Is that too late?
No, two hours before.
Oh.
Sorry, I don't have your name on the list.
Yeah, of course. It's not your fault. I just, maybe I didn't push the right button. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't oversight. Do we have any more minutes?
It was not intentional, though we do have to follow though.
All right, that's fine. I'll, I'll save it for next time.
It's not intentional.
Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes. Yes. The posting sign. Now we move on to our regular action agenda. And first up is our bond sale resolution with,
Thank you. Well, thank you. Uh, the purpose for this resolution is to, uh, really close the, the sale of a couple different series of bonds. But, uh, so if I don't say it enough during this, we're asking you to support, support this resolution to sell $53,125,000 of, uh, building site refunding bonds. We came to the board, um, in November of, uh, twen- last year, November 20, November 10, 22, uh, 2022, to ask you for some parameters around this project. And some of those parameters were that, uh, we couldn't, that when the sale closed, we couldn't pay the underwriter more than 0.75% and the total project could not have interest rate greater than 7.5%. And just through the, through the amazing work of our team, um, I'll talk about our team, where, who all was on our team later on, but the actual, uh, closing interest cost was, uh, 0.358%, which is less than half of the amount authorized. So really, really successful sale. And, uh, the actual interest rate, the total interest cost was, uh, 4.12%, which is, uh, far below the seven and a half percent authorized. And so, and why, why is seven and a half percent, if you remember from the fall of, uh, 2022, it just was a lot of interest rate uncertainty. And so to get the deal done, because we had to sell the bonds for, because half of those bonds are new money bonds, um, the rate had to be higher, but that's, that wasn't an unreasonable, uh, prognostication back in the fall. So we really, really, uh, had, had a good sale. And along with that, included in this package is refunding of the 2013 bonds. And, uh, the percentage we set as like a minimum savings amount was a percent and a half in the actual, uh, percent, the actual savings was 1.7, uh, 1%, which doesn't sound like a lot until you think of, and say this accord, and say taxpayers accord a million dollars. So just really a, really a great result. Um, moving on, in the day we were going to closing, if you can just think back, it seems like a long time ago, but it was only, uh, March 21st, we were in the market pricing these bonds. Uh, we had a couple of major bank, bank failures. One, uh, two huge banks failed in the United States and, uh, there's a hu- also an international bank failure and just the market was all over the place. But because of the work of our team, and our team consists of, you know, we've got our administrative team, Dr. Vanderjack and I, but we also have PFM, uh, Public Finance Management. They're really the quarterbacks of this. They've come and presented a couple of times. They advise us on all things and, um, they just do a wonderful job leading the process. But it also, the other leg of the stool is Steeple, our, their, there are bankers, they, they actually get into the market and help us sell the bonds and they also market our bonds. So, but the combination of PFM, Steeple, and our, um, our team at, at Hudsonville, it, we just couldn't be happier about the results here. Along with the $250,000 saved in like real dollars that we saved on the refunding bonds, this next one takes a little bit, it, I had to look at this a couple of times. Um, but this sale, um, concluded real savings to the taxpayers of almost $68 million. And that, and that came as a result of a couple different factors, but one of the biggest factors is that, um, Dr. Vanderjack pushed a couple of projects up from phase one to phase two. So we had to sell more bonds in the first, first phase. That saved us, um, bond days, you know, bid day savings, saved us $10 million on projects, but it also saved us, um, well, just say the number. We, we saved nearly $40 million just in interest rate savings over the original projections that we used in 2019 to go to the Department of Treasury. So, um, and a lot of that had to do with selling those bonds. It's, you know, they, they tell me, Pat, don't try to be a market timer. You're not Warren Buffett, so I don't. And I didn't go there. So just, it's not about that. But just, it, the facts are, because we did what we did when we did it, we were in the market in that February, March, when COVID happened. And just because, because of that timing and moving those projects up to be bid before COVID, before things, before COVID inflation took, you know, that took over, um, we saved that 40 million. And then with, with the fact that we were able to restructure the bonds, we, we were able to not, um, go into the school bond loan fund and that saved us another $27 million over those projections. So all told, there's, um, nearly, nearly 60, $68 million saved for the taxpayers. So it's, it's not that often we get to talk about things like this, especially, you know, from the finance office that we really have these kind of real savings, but it is pretty exciting. It will mean that Hudsonville will be able to get, you know, get our projects done better, um, have more dollars, more dollars for kids on our projects, more savings, and, uh, you know, the, the taxpayers, you know, for taxpayers will be out of the school bond loan sooner. So really happy about the results of this. And I think Dr. Vanderjack has a few comments or is that?
No, I just want to appreciate the work that Pat and his team did. It's a, it's a lot of work to get this together. Uh, the timing is always nerve-wracking. Um, the hour and a half stress level, watching bars grow faster than they're not as fast as you want them to, or just everything. Um, knowing the impact it has on our taxpayers, on our projects, um, if you can't speak highly of the work that Pat and his team did. So, thank you.
So we have the following resolution that the board approved, the board, the bond resolution as presented by Mr. Patrick Briggs, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. Motion first. Motion by Ken. Support, support by Mr. Davis. Other any questions for Pat?
Explain about $27 million.
Yeah, sure. So because, because we were able to, uh, basically get so many of those bonds front-loaded in the Series One with different coupon rates on them, the, the split was, really the planned split was about 50/50, but because we were able to get 70% in that first trunk, um, and we actually, you remember that, that first sale, we were able to use that 5% coupon rate and we got almost $10 million of premium. So it was that the premium from that first sale, along with the fact that we were able to just to slide, you know, basically another 30% into the first series. But it, it, that, it really comes down to we were able to get a better interest rate and we got a better interest rate on more bonds.
Okay. So have you gone to school? I don't remember what these interest rates were in the school bond, but, but we, we, um, we just moved them up and we got paid a higher interest rate from school.
Sure, sure. We would have had to been in the, in the fund longer, um, because we just were. Well, um, it, it follows basically the, uh, those, that's, it's odd because that, that fund is a tax, those are all taxable bonds in the school bond loan fund. So they don't always file, file the non-taxable, but they've been as high as four and a half percent and as low, they got down to the muni rate. They were just, they were at around a percent. So that, that's gone up and down, as has the municipal bond rate that we, where we, where we sell our bonds.
Any other questions for Pat?
Will we be doing something, I just kind of messed up, and will we be doing something to communicate the positive outcomes to our community via social media?
Yeah, we have something prepared for the next apple seed to go out. We're waiting for the board to hear it tonight. And then, uh, we have the final documents in the mail just two days ago, I think, three days ago.
Yes.
And so we'll get the information back.
What happened before the election?
Um, we, we can't, apple seed just went out.
Oh.
So, yeah, but we, we put stuff out there online and these events will be there, but we'll get information on it.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. That's great work.
Any other questions? All in favor, say yes. Yes. All at the same time? All right, property tax collection rates, PAT.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, there's, there's an analysis in the report that shows the year by year. And as you can see, the rates have been pretty stable for many, many years. And there was, uh, uh, townships in Ottawa County were just as, asking for a higher reimbursement rate this year. I thank our, our partners in, uh, Jamesstown, Georgetown for leading the, you know, keeping their costs lower. Um, but this rate is also a rate that, uh, is reimbursed to us. We pay this and Ottawa ISD reimburses us. Um, so even, even though we do, uh, Dr. Vanderjack and I talked to some of, talked to these townships, um, we, we, we do negotiate the rate and then the, uh, the ISD does reimburse us for this cost. So our recommendation is to support the rates in the far right-hand corner, uh, as listed and allow us to move forward with summer tax collections.
All right. So we have a resolution as proposed. That the board approved the 2023 summer property tax collection rates as presented by Patrick Briggs, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. So moved by Dawn in support. Support by Mark. Any questions for Pat again?
Any other big bumps he's foreseeing the future? Should we cover it a little bit?
Yes. Yes, there.
You're at the last one.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Full of our block.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, yes, the, it will not be, uh, I would say, uh, the Georgetown rate and the city rate, the Jamestown rate will be up to three-and-a-quarter next year. Um, not sure where the, where the cap is going to be on the rest of them, but we're talking about a lot of things, just, just as an eyes, you know, as an eyes the, the schools, because this, even though they're able to reimburse us right now, there's not, and then there's pot of money. Um, and then we're talking about, yeah, just a lot of discussions there. But yeah, I, I'd expect in the, in the future, the, uh, other rates will increase as well. Thank you. Good question.
Any other questions for Pat?
I think it's pretty standard across the state, rather than municipalities, this kind of is.
Yeah, so, so the minimum rate is two dollars and fifty cents, and, um, these, they're, they're not far off. They're not far off. There, there are some that are higher, and I would say where it works out, where a rate would be higher is if a township, because we're fractional in some of these townships, and they've got to, you know, have a hundred percent collection and run a bill just for Hudsonville, um, up on its way. Allendale has three prop, three Hudsonville properties in that township. Their costs are higher just for them to answer email, you know, so, but a big township like Georgetown does have some economies of scale that the others don't. So there are, the, those, uh, smaller townships do have co, higher cost per, per, uh, tax bill, and those are the ones that have the higher rates. If they look at their actual costs for the ones that are outside, our townships aren't that small, but there are some really, really small townships out, you know, out north. So they, they do have higher rates.
Other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
So post same sign? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Next up, we have our board policy updates and revisions. Dr. Vanderjack?
Thank you. Uh, we talked about this at the work session, uh, a couple weeks ago, maybe it was before some break, I guess. Um, we have one recommendation for a change to the policy, actually all of the tobacco policies, we made that change in the policies, um, so tonight there are no additional. So we bring this to the board as a first reading for all the tobacco policies. I know they, they're all, they repetitive, um, all the way up to the student assessment, which is another policy twenty-six, twenty-three, has an update regarding the changes in student assessment, and the grant funds we talked about, the animals on district property, as well as school safety, we talked about. So there are no other recommendations. So it is our recommendation to the board to approve this as a first reading, and if there are suggestions, either tonight discuss them or let me know. Um, if the first read is approved, let me know before the second reading, will I change the recommendations?
Okay, so we have the following resolutions proposed, that the board approved the first reading, with the following board policy addition provisions as just presented by Dr. Vanderjack. I can have a motion?
Along.
Motion of Andrew, support?
Support.
Support by Nick. Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack? We did review these quite extensively at our work session, but any further questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
So post same sign? All right, motion passes. Dr. Vanderjack, your update.
Thanks. For an update today, I'll be, uh, I don't know, a brief, but if you have in front of you the summer activities, I really like to thank Rebecca Fabiano and all the work she does in her office to get this, there's a lot going on in the summer. This is available in our buildings, it's available in our central office, it's available to you to please share with neighbors, friends, anybody. Uh, great appetites for our kids this summer, so I encourage you to take a look through here. If you're interested in joining the, um, Ninja Robotics, you're welcome to do that. You heard a little bit about that. I know some of you are very interested in the mysterious case of the missing master builders. You're welcome to join in also. So, um, just want to share that with you as something to highlight in all the work she's done, and it's, as you can see, just looking at the cover, it's pretty cool. Um, I would like to let the board know, and we talked about this a few times, and I do want to thank the board for their support as we communicated with the Ottawa County regarding an additional resource officer, uh, for Hudsonville Public Schools. That was approved on Tuesday evening by Ottawa County, therefore I'm working with the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department on what the next steps are with interviewing. They usually take an internal, move them to a resource officer, but they have to backfill prior to doing that. So we know that'll be in place by the start of the school year, but we're still trying to work through, um, as soon as possible, we get somebody into the north campus, which would be, we call it the Baldwin Campus, we go from there. So I do want to thank the board for the support on that, not only for Hudsonville's support, I want to thank Georgetown Township for their support, as well, Ottawa County is extremely important, that partnership, and the safety of our kids is always the most important thing. Tonight, we talked about prom coming up for kids, uh, for our high school students, which is at the end of this month, um, down at Twenty Monroe Live, which is very exciting. It's a great venue for, for our kids. I do want to also let you know, um, as, as Ken Hall knows, um, they had cap and gown pickup this past week, which is the first emotional state for my wife to lose it when our son came home with his cap and gown. Um, so it's getting to that point. It's pretty cool. Um, but I want to thank Jordan, uh, Mr. Beal, I'm sorry, and his staff, um, in getting that, it's, it's an exciting time for our kids. You can just feel the energy in the air. And they did this at the same time, I know Mr. Schumansky's not here, but Joe Schumansky leads our testing that takes place at the high school. It's a major undertaking. Our elementarys and middle schools do M-step, which is a huge undertaking also, but trying to get two thousand kids to be in the right place for the different testing or not testing that they have to do, um, over the course of this week is a, is a big deal. So especially when the weather's like this, it's a lot easier if it had been cold and rainy for our kids to be tested, but they were not. So I do want to thank, um, Mr. Schumansky, um, and all the high school staff that worked through the testing this week. So, and on a final note, um, most of you have, have heard about construction. I, I know that I've talked about this before, we're excited, things are moving along nicely. Our last phase, we began the work with our early childhood center, began discussions on that transition, once our wrestling program is out of that facility, probably around the Christmas time, what those renovations will look like. Um, we're ready to get to work on Bauer Elementary. Park Elementary goes to bid soon, that's a major renovation. The fieldhouse floor has been poured and full of concrete, uh, it's flat, which that is poured, it's, it looks nice. Um, and things are coming along nicely. We're looking forward to a dry and seventy-five degrees temperatures for the rest of the summer. One of the great construction work companies. So that's my update, sir. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack?
Dr. Vanderjack, I just have a question. I'm, a couple days ago, you had sent us an email about a student who had been injured on the playground with, and you left the names, it's up, can you tell us how that man managed to make it?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, uh, he is doing well. He'll need a little bit of physical therapy, but he's, he's doing okay.
Okay, thank you very much for the, uh, immediate update. Appreciate it.
Other questions for Dr. Vanderjack?
Do you know if he can win the senior awards night this year? Yes. Putting you on the spot. It is.
Tell me, you license him.
Yeah. It is. May eighth at? Seven o'clock. Is that right, Mr. Beal? Or? Yes. May eighth, seventeenth. Sorry, put you on the spot. That's cool. No, it's okay, I just knew it was right around there.
All right, other questions?
Just a, this is so good, and, and I, you know, reference it in context of ten, twenty years ago, and the breadth of offerings, the, the type, the variety of offerings, um, across grade levels and, and across different activities is just, it's remarkable. I just take it.
I'll pass that along, cause...
Please do. It's just so good.
All right, we will do a board roundtable, and we'll start to my left with the speakers.
Um, I can't let another meeting go by without at least, um, making a comment about some of the revelations that were made at the last board meeting, the Sentinel article, and tonight. Um, it's disappointing to me, um, but just as importantly, I want to remind my colleagues that we all signed a code of conduct at the January meeting, and based on what I read, there were several violations, and I know it's a pact between us, um, some of you frankly should know better, um, but I want to move forward, and hopefully some of this was out of ignorance, um, but I hope we can do better. Please reference the code of conduct. If I'm ever out of line, I expect one of you to politely and personally let me know. That's all I'm gonna say.
I also had, um, prepared to make a, a couple of comments, good comments. My goal is not to disparage anybody on this board. Our community, our parents, our teachers want a successful, well-running board. Um, the evidence clearly shows that a function, that a highly functioning board leads to a highly functioning district, and, uh, we have a highly functioning district built on the shoulders of previous boards, um, and we want to certainly continue that. The evidence points to some activity, perhaps, um, outside of, uh, the open meetings act. Um, there will be others that address that situation. Um, we don't want to be concerned as a board about what conversations may or may not be occurring outside of purview of the public and the rest of the board. And so, um, again, I, we, we just all, myself included, want to do better in terms of transparency and in terms of, uh, how we move forward with the board. Um, again, high functioning board leads to student achievement, leads to academic excellence, excellence. That's what will grow the district in the long term. That's it. Thank you.
So I thank all the teachers and amazing administrators that we have here. It's a privilege to be on this board, and thank you for all, all of you that make this board. It's a privilege to be here.
All right, thank you. Uh, motion for adjournment? Motion by Ken?
Support, Dawn.
Support by Mark. All in favor, so we can enjoy this beautiful evening.
Yes.
Yeah, pose. Very good. Thank you.